All right, and this is the proclamation for the Interfaith Day of Prayer, which will be November eighteenth. Well, I guess in this case it would be, I'll get to it in a second. The residents of Madison come from diverse backgrounds and faith, and we celebrate the rich tapestry and cultures and beliefs that make our city vibrant. We recognize the importance of unity, compassion, and understanding in our community, as well as the need for spiritual reflection and connection. The power of prayer is a universal practice that can bring people of all backgrounds together in a spirit of peace, harmony, and goodwill. So we officially recognize the value of prayer in our city's life and promote the benefits of collective spiritual reflection, and endorse the third Saturday of November as Interfaith Day of Prayer. So I therefore, Paul Finley, Mayor of the City of Madison, do hereby proclaim the day November eighteenth, 2023, as Interfaith Day of Prayer in the City of Madison. And we're glad to have a good group of folks up here. I'm not sure which one of y'all wants this. I'll start with you. All right. And if anybody'd like to say a word, you sure can.
Okay, good evening. And I hear that prayer, or this will be a first for Madison. So as a member of the Madison Interfaith Council, I would say thank you on behalf of all of us. And regardless of your religious practice, you are welcome to come and join us. It's next Saturday, we're starting it off, and we're going to pray. If you believe in prayer, we're going to, we're going to get it in. Thank you.
And just to add to Pastor Eugene, that'll be next, this Saturday at ten a.m. here at the flagpole that we'll be meeting to pray for our city.
Okay, thank you, Ma, for clarifying that. And Mayor, I think you had one other thing you wanted to bring to our attention?
Yeah, a couple, I've had a couple of requests. We had a situation Friday night in the city where we had an unfortunate incident that occurred. And Chief Gandy, if you had a couple minutes, could please come forward and kind of give a little bit more information on that? I think it would help as we move into tonight, giving council a little bit of information, but also the public.
Good evening. Yes, we had a, an incident on Friday night that was unfortunate for several people involved. We had a young man who was suffering from some mental health issues. Had been arguing with his family earlier in the day, and then later in the day, his family tried to take him out, go for a walk, just try to cool off and everything. And he broke away from them, ran out onto Burr Green Road intentionally trying to be struck by vehicles going by. He, two vehicles were able to avoid him, one of the vehicles having a family with kids inside. The driver of that vehicle turned around and tried to come back to warn other drivers about this guy trying to jump out in front of moving traffic. And unfortunately got there as he was struck by a twenty-five-year-old female driver who was just completely devastated by this. It did result in a fatality, but it was an intentional act on his part. It's kind of a disturbing trend because we've, we've had three pedestrian fatalities within the last year and a half to two years. And two out of those three were intentional acts where the individual was mentally ill and intentionally stepped out in traffic to be struck by a vehicle. One was on County Line Road where a female who had been suffering from alcoholism and mental health issues actually found an area where trees had kind of darkened the roadway, waited for a vehicle to come by and jumped off the curb right in front of the vehicle, and she was struck. The third one we had was an individual that just wasn't paying attention. He jumped out of a truck that he was riding with to go run across the street to a convenience store and just wasn't looking at where he was going and ran right in front of another vehicle and was struck. But two out of three is concerning. And concerning that that's how they chose to end their life, but in doing so have also affected the lives of others, the drivers that actually struck them.
And I think a couple of things that we'll highlight tonight in the consent agenda are some of the things that council has appropriated to support other organizations that help us with mental health and some of the things that are going on.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for that update. Next, we will move public comments. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name and the district that you live in. We will begin with comment cards that were submitted in advance of the meeting. And the first person who submitted a card is Charity Stratton.
Hi, my name is Charity Stratton. I live in District Six, and I've been a resident of the City of Madison for going on twenty years. In the spring of 2021, I accepted a position, a volunteer position as Communication Director for my church, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And I set out to find ways to work alongside other faiths in our community. I tried to find any interfaith group in the city that Madison might have and found that there were none. So I decided to start one, and with a small group of volunteer helpers, we started inviting more than seventy-five churches in Madison to participate in the Madison Interfaith Council. After over a year of extending invitations, we had our first official meeting in September of 2022 with six people in attendance. We now have nine of those seventy-five faith communities represented. We meet monthly to collaborate in order to identify, discuss, and find ways to work together as faith communities to provide compassionate humanitarian service to those in need in Madison and the surrounding area. We build on the foundation of what we have in common. Most faith traditions have a belief that we should care for one another. This is what unites us. We do not discuss beliefs that might divide us. Much good has come to our community through this collaboration. We have collected hygiene and food items for indigent inmates. We've held a food drive for a local food pantry. We've compiled a list of resources that each of our churches has available for the community, allowing us to share our resources with each other. We've held an Interfaith Community Day of Service around nine eleven. We've recently held a coat drive to benefit students in the City of Madison. And this Saturday, we're excited for our first Interfaith Day of Prayer at ten a.m. at the flagpole outside of the City Hall. And thank you for that. I'd like to invite you to consider inviting one of your faith leaders to participate, not only in our Interfaith Day of Prayer this Saturday, but to come and see if the Madison Interfaith Council might be something your faith would like to participate in. I know we will not get everyone to participate, but what I've seen is that those who come with an open heart often decide to stay and be a part of something good. I often feel like there's not a lot I can do to influence more peace and understanding in this world, but we can make a difference in our own backyard. Together, we can create more unity and harmony within our varied faith in the City of Madison, and I invite you to be a part of it. Thank you, and thank you for being willing to be public servants.
Thank you, Ms. Stratton. Next is Bernadette Mayer.
Okay, good evening. I'm Bernadette Mayer. I reside in Heatherwood Subdivision, District Five. I'm going to just run through a few things, but the first thing is to please restore public comments to five minutes. Citizens who prepare for city council meetings can be more effective with five minutes of public comment time. I'm more prepared than I can ever present at every meeting. Three minutes is too short for multiple issues. Number two, more planning placement of needed sidewalks for public safety. I'll come back to that. Number three, traffic light placement, as I've said at last city council meeting, and pedestrian crossing on Slaughter Road with shared cost intersection of Heather and Slaughter. Other side of the road is Creekwood Subdivision, Madison Valley Drive. Other items that I know I won't have time to get to because three minutes is not enough time. Disposal of fire and gym equipment. Is this related to the resolution to purchase the Hexagon Fitness Center? The refining signage solicitation bid? What is kind of the estimate for these signs? Is it just for the downtown area because the rest of it just isn't needed? The resolution to purchase Hexagon Fitness Center? What about the city's needs in roads, sidewalks, and traffic lights? The resolution of public safety annex, full scope of project costs anticipated? And the proposed noise permit decrease in filing time? Why is a decrease in time necessary, and how has the longer time been problematic? Now to get back to where, what I really want to focus my time on. On the sidewalk, as I said, I brought up to city council before about extending the sidewalk along Eastview Drive going south up the hill to the intersection of Scenic Drive and Chadrick. Traffic calming digital traffic speeds in two places on Eastview is a sign to have this sidewalk extended. A number of subdivisions can have better walking access with sidewalk connections, and of course, the safety of the cyclists. And I'm kind of glad to see somebody was stopped for speeding on, on that road as I came here tonight. So anyhow, but the traffic light placement on Slaughter Road, it turns out that it's really important for the, for Madison citizens to safely access Indian Creek Parkway. And that's where we cross over and go, my husband crosses over that road eight to ten times a week because he goes, and there's a lot of residents that do, and a lot of residents are biking, and they bike around in that back area and they come back through. A lot of them do it on Sundays because it's a lot safer, you know, doing it. But it, it just makes it better for access for all of these residents to be able to use, use the greenway. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayer. Next is Bob Burns.
Bob Burns, District Four. I'm on the other side of County Line Road. Just now that I'm retired, just observations as my daily activities. School buses. Where I live, I live in a, I'll say a mixed neighborhood. Half of, I'll say, half of those are annexed in the mass, and the other are still in Limestone County. School buses, I know there's a shortage of drivers, but there's a school bus that comes through my neighborhood, never stops to pick up kids. And it just, it kind of makes me wonder, the routes for these things, and maybe this is the wrong forum to do this in. But also volunteer in the city, over Rainbow Mountain here with Madison Greenways and Trails. Coming in, I noticed there's probably far more parents who are driving their kids to school nowadays. And there's nothing wrong with that. But again, if we, if we have a shortage of bus drivers, if we're just driving empty buses, I don't see what's the value in that, right? And now speaking about with people bringing their, their kids to school. So when I come out of the back of my neighborhood, go down Brown's Ferry Road to Burr Green, there's a four-way stop, and at some point they're going to put in a four-way, or one of those traffic circles there, right? First question is, where is that traffic going to go? I mean, to best of my knowledge, we don't have any council members that live on our side of the tracks or on the other side of County Line Road that deal with this traffic at least twice a day. So there's a church that's west of Burr Green. There have been times I'm sitting at the, the driveway of that, waiting to get through that four-way intersection, only to cross and sit through four lights to get, try to get across County Line, only to get down Gillespie to that traffic circle. Cars are backed up on Bolt who are dropping kids off at school at the elementary on the north side, right? So again, why do we have all these school buses? Then as I progress on down Gillespie to Walt Trianna, I see school buses that are coming west. And then, you know, in today's world, nobody's considering others, right? Is there a rule for blocking intersections? Because then you get people who are blocking intersections, people want to make a left in the neighborhoods, or school buses, they can't get in because the traffic's backed up. I don't know if I'm making any sense or not. But, but my big question is, is now we're breaking ground with, what, four hundred new homes further down Brown's Ferry Road? Where is all this traffic going to go? Okay, something to consider. Because I know one road, Morris, which school buses can't even pass in opposing directions, okay? Seventh thing real quick, voting, the voting precincts. I worked a precinct at Lamb of God. We're up to over eighty-eight hundred people. That's a small little church on probably the busiest road here in Madison City. Consider maybe breaking into different, two different precincts, okay?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Burns. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward and state your name and district.
Jennifer Coe, Ashley State, District Five, Council President. Okay, I have a couple of questions under the Consent Agenda and Finance Committee. I think y'all removed this one. I'll just go over it briefly. Resolution twenty twenty-three, three forty-two, R, approving the, okay, approving that appropriation with the Arts Council. So it's actually the Arts Alliance. Okay, they haven't filed a tax return anyway, even though they're supposed to, they're under the umbrella of MVP now, though, right? Okay, so I guess from now on you'll do the appropriations through MVP. As per the announcement in the Madison Record, so are we appropriating that money under the wrong organization, which is technically under the wrong name in this consent agenda? All right, so that way the public knows which money goes where. And so ostensibly they'll know how it's spent. Incidentally, the Madison Arts Council hasn't fired their, filed their nine ninety since 2016. So they could straighten that out. It's not that hard. Next, under Mayor Paul Finley, Resolution twenty twenty-three, three forty-seven, R, authorizing the purchase of the Hexagon Fitness Center in the amount of four million, four hundred nineteen thousand total purchase price. In a minute from the last work session, you, your quote is saying the interest on the loan was zero. It's free. Okay, so when I look at the agenda packet, the loan agreement says we're paying two point five percent interest, which is good. I mean, that's great, but it's not free. Maybe, I guess, by announcing it, maybe they decided to go ahead and change the terms. I don't know. And are we getting a pool at Hexagon? Why are we buying this now? What about the community center that's still under demolition or construction over at the Brown's Ferry location? Citizens were told we couldn't afford a pool there, so maybe we'll get a pool at this new one. I don't know. Is this a DECA grant for five hundred thousand? Is that going towards this community center paying that? Because I was looking at the DECA, I thought that was for different programs. I didn't know you could buy a community center with it. Maybe y'all could get back to me on that. Anyway, I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Margie Daly, Carins District. I want to talk about the LED lights. I did some real deep research on them, okay? So they're very harmful to the eyes if not installed correctly. We did not install ours correctly. The AMA put out guidelines in 2016. The problem with the LED lights, when they have no shields on them, it's required you put shields on them. Many of them do not. I saw the ones by the lake where the person drove in a couple of weeks ago, no shields. Okay, they affect melatonin, they affect astigmatism. That's forty percent of the population have astigmatism in their eyes. Then it causes macular degeneration. Now, this is only if they're not installed correctly, but we did not install them correctly. Now, I would like to sue the consultant because we paid this guy five million, maybe a little better after the little stuff went out. But these lights are damaging to almost fifty percent of the population because they're not installed correctly. The arms are too short, they don't hang over the street, they don't have a large radius. They can also cause seizures because they have a strobe light effect. These LED lights are dangerous. Okay, we're going to blame it on mental illness, that we had three fatalities. The eighteen years before that, we had one fatality in the city pedestrian. We've also had many more motor vehicle accidents. I've put in Freedom of Information, and I gave the AMA stuff to Lisa so you can all look at it if you want. I'm not making this up out of my head. It's not for me. I'm more concerned about County Line Road. It's a four-lane road. It's not even lighting, one lane on each side. That's my whole, yield my time. Anyway, so I really think that we have to look into fixing those lights. Okay, I see we're doing a lot of like national donations, twenty thousand, thirty thousand. Huntsville Hospital Foundation, seventy-five hundred. I don't know if that's for Apple. If it's for Apple, it's okay. I see we added a few more, five thousand to Slaughter and Slaughter for the redistricting maps. Then I saw that a DECA, it's some kind of a community grant. Can we fix the lights at least on the main street so we stop having so many fatalities and accidents? I have a lot more to speak on, but I don't have time. I saw something about the police department. It's twenty twenty-three dash two seven two resolution, something about a police agency instead of a police department, going through Franklin County Commission. I mean, I don't even understand it.
You're out of time, Ms. Daly. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward. Seeing none, we will close public comments and move to the Consent Agenda and Finance Committee report.
Okay, the Finance Committee has reviewed the, the bills and the invoices and have approved them all. And I wanted to point out that we are accepting a donation for, from the Madison Street Festival for Mars buses, a community service grant from Tom Butler for ten thousand dollars for the fire department. There's a donation from Empur for twenty-five dollars for the senior center. And there's a Nadeka grant for five hundred thousand dollars to use for the, I think it's for the community center. It's for the community center. And so with that, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion in a second. Is there any discussion? We're ready for a vote. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Presentation and reports, we're going to begin with Mayor Finley.
Okay, and before I get there, I'll go back to the consent agenda and a couple of the organizations that council supported. The Enrichment Center. We also, you guys supported the Partnership for Drug-Free Community, National Children's Advocacy Center, and the Huntsville Hospital Foundation. And that does support Apple, just so you know, or at least part of it goes to Apple. So that does go there. And then I'll move to the first request for council support is Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three forty-seven dash R, authorizing the purchase of the Hexagon Fitness Center in the amount of four million, four hundred nineteen thousand with a total purchase payment over five years. Move to approve?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion or questions about this?
I would ask, Brian, I do think if you could give just a second. It is interest-free to us. It does have an interest piece in there that supports what Hexagon needed. And could you please explain that? Because I do think it is something we want, make sure we get corrected.
Absolutely. What we have is Hexagon, they asked that we designate a two point five interest rate for this, even though there's not going to be any additional interest charged to the city. Basically, the reason for doing this is if there was just simply a zero interest rate assigned to it, the IRS wouldn't compute one to it that would be higher than two point five. So this is entirely an accounting request on their side that does not increase the purchase price in any way. All it does is just reduce what we would call the principal. They will designate some of the interests. This is all, you know, allowed under IRS Code. But it's entirely done to help them with their tax bill, does not increase the principal that we negotiated as far as those interests go. So yes, the promissory note absolutely does say two point five, but that's the reason for that. It basically adds no additional cost for us, but helps them on the tax side.
All right, so at closing, this would be ten percent. And then what they gave us is a five-year period to pay this back, eight hundred thousand dollars a year, starting in October of 2024, five years out. That is correct, okay?
And I just wanted to add one thing, too, that we're looking at mid-year budget to be able to staff the facility so that we can open it to the public. Right now, we don't have enough resources to be able to staff. Right now, we don't have enough resources to be able to staff the facility in addition to Dublin and the areas that we have, but in the summer, we will be looking to open that up to our community.
Yeah, I think that's one thing we're looking at, and the other, you know, as we look at the different programatics we'll have at the community center, Dublin, and Hexagon, it gives us obviously the reach of the city, allows us to grow into those facilities over the next few years. And then we'll look at the programatics and look at what the cost would be for different programs that we would have, or a community program that you can buy into. So you are correct.
Perfect.
Any questions?
Yes, I have several questions. Number one, the ink on the budget is barely dry, and now you're coming forward with another $4.5 million project. How do you plan on coming up with the money to?
For this one?
Afford it, yes.
Yeah, so the down payment will come out of Recreation's budget, it's already in there, Cory has the money. The next five years would be out of the Bond Fund 71, and that's how Roger says that he would like to pay for it. So $800,000 a year would come out of the Bond Fund, one $800,000 payment at a time over a five-year period.
Okay, what's coming out of Rec that we're losing for Rec to pay for this?
When I did the budget for parts in Rec this year, we had lights at the lower quad at Palmer Park that are outdated, so they weren't working, they no longer manufacture parts for those lights. We were able to find from a electric, electrical, excuse me, an electrical company in Louisiana to retrofit those lights to keep them operational. That wasn't going to cost us $600,000. I can defer those costs for that lighting system because it's the panels and stuff. However, in the future, we'll need to retrofit the lights anyway, because they don't make the light bulbs for that particular, those fields anymore. The EPA doesn't allow that wattage of bulb, so that's what's coming out of our budget that I could use to pay towards this project.
Looked into how much it's going to cost us to staff the facility.
We've looked into the cost of the maintenance of that, which would be about $160,000 a year. The cost of staffing will be discussed with Recreation as we look at all of our facilities, and then determine how we will move forward as we can move people in different areas now that not everybody has to stay in Dublin. So the staffing of the community center, moving the senior center over to the community center, and then Hexagon will all be discussed and brought to you guys for a mid-year budget. So yes, we're looking at that.
Yeah, we have not even come up with the cost for the community center, and now you want us to add the cost of this facility?
Correct.
Without direct numbers.
Right.
Okay, I have a slight problem with that. It seems that we just keep on adding more things, but I think it's great for the community, but we don't really seem to have a, now we need that. We just put, we haven't even finished the community center, how it's going to provide for the people, and now you want us to add this. When we were given our tour, it was decided that the people were not, the citizens were not going to be using it. It was just going to be for the, for the city employees. So when did that change?
Well, I don't know if it ever changed. I think what, when you guys talked at this point, as Mara said, we don't have a plan for moving it forward into the community, being able to use it, but we will get there. The second part of what you've asked for is, you say we're just coming up with these. I can promise you on this one, we have one choice. We either purchase this facility, which again, in purchasing it for $4.4 million, in talking to Gerald and his team, were we to build that today, it would be $16 million. So, and secondly, if we don't purchase it, Hexagon will sell it to somebody else. So we have a choice, we already have the complex, this fills out that complex, it gives us a total of 19 acres that we can continue to grow into from a staffing standpoint, again, eventually, and probably working with our Madison City Schools, a pool standpoint. So you are correct in this one, that this one would either take it now, or we're giving it to somebody else.
Seems to be that's the way a lot of the projects come to us, do it now. Can we, we're still waiting for our comprehensive plan. Where does this all fit in the comprehensive plan?
Well, I think as you fill out that area of, the Hexagon area, the DECA, no, the, not a DECA, the money for the building itself, the police and fire station along with the acreage, with that ARPA, there you go, ARPA money, there's all those acronyms, helps us now, with, as the city has grown, you have something in the south, something in the middle, something in the east. So as we, we'll grow into this, Karen, I think this is, it's a great question, but opportunity sometimes gives you one chance, and this is an opportunity to finalize that.
Yeah, I think if we were flush with cash, this would be great. We still have a lot of road projects, that's what the people keep telling me that we need, need to be focusing on that. Lovely opportunity, it's a wonderful facility, I'm not saying it's not. I'm just saying, where are our priorities? We have spent a lot of money recently on recreation, which is good, but is it a detriment to other things we could be spending on? Like the sidewalks that we are constantly looking for, like fixing the streets, getting the roads better. You know, to me, it's like, where are our priorities?
Are there any other questions from anyone else?
I do have one follow-up question, Mr. Kilgore. When you were explaining the payment, when the agreement lists the 2.5% interest, what you're describing is how Hexagon's going to book the payments. The cost to the city does not increase, there's no interest payment on top of the agreed purchase price.
That is correct. There's absolutely no, basically, the principal amount that was presented to you is 4.14, has not changed at all. It's just simply allocating what portion of that's going to be principal and what portion will be what they designate as interest. If they don't do that, the IRS will designate a higher interest rate, the 2.5, so that's why they're asking for this arrangement. And it's strictly accounting, but does not create any additional cost for the city.
Okay, and then in terms of a mid-year budget discussion, is your plan to come to the council with a comprehensive plan of how to utilize all of the recreation facilities so that we can make the appropriate?
Correct.
Set the appropriate priorities for the different funding sources that we have?
That is correct.
Now, in terms of road projects or sidewalk projects or anything else, is there any limitation to, say, putting a sidewalk on Eastview? I kind of agree, I like that idea. I applaud you, Ms. Mayor, for bringing that up, and I'm all for a sidewalk on Eastview. Is there anything about purchasing this property that would prohibit us from exploring that sidewalk project?
I think Slaughter is the most, when you, I mean, Eastview, when you ask me that, that's probably the most difficult one to ask because of the terrain of what you have to do to get it all the way up there. When I hear Bernadette talk about Slaughter Road, you know, we've had meetings with Huntsville and Madison County, and what she's talking about from Heatherwood over to the Huntsville side, we are meeting with them right now to talk about situations like that. So anything that we have, Greg's project that he has, that he's talked about on Mill Road, from County Line to the Trailhead, any of them can be cost, can be, you can make the cost minimal, or something like Eastview, which is a huge cost, which could be prohibitive regardless of how much money we have and time. So we always are looking for connectivity, and especially to get you to areas of high traffic, and we will continue to do that. So there's nothing prohibitive about that. We always have that in our budget. We added money in the funding for roads this year, for neighborhood paving, we always have at least a million, too, we added more money to that. So we continue as a council, or you guys do, to add money into those respective pots of money.
Okay. Anything else from anyone? I think we're ready for a vote.
Can we verify the vote, please?
I'm sorry, what?
Can you clarify the vote for me?
I made the motion, Connie seconded.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't know what the question was.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes.
All right, thank you, council. Couple more things real quickly. Thank you to everybody who participated in Veterans Day, you know, in this area, it's Veterans Week. We had so many activities, starting with the prayer breakfast that happened at the YMCA, the Hogan YMCA, a week ago Friday. I watched most of, I went to, had the pleasure of going to Heritage Elementary School on Thursday and watching that entire school come out for their veterans that are, that are part of the overall team there, and most of the elementary and middle schools had pieces like that. And then we were in the parade down in Huntsville on Saturday, thanks to Chief and Chief, a couple council members with me, but I've never seen such a large crowd out to support our veterans. So to everyone who is a veteran out there right now, thank you for your service to our nation. Secondly, we had a ribbon cutting for our pickleball courts a couple weeks ago, 12 brand-new courts at what will eventually change to the Town Madison area, but it's behind the Hexagon facility. I continue to hear kudos for how those courts look. Cory and them are going to add a couple things, numbers, to take care of a couple net things, but huge congratulations on the pickleball courts. We also, over in Town Madison, opened BJ's on Friday. I told Mary Beth, congratulations on a twofer, that was the largest economic project in Madison, and also a zoo at the same time, which is what it was over the course of the last four or five days. But obviously, something that is extremely important to our city and the Town Madison area. I did want to mention again, Slaughter Road is something that Mayor Battle, Chairman McCutcheon and I are talking about. It's already, the engineering part of that is funded, looking to try to tie together and make differences in the major intersections, but also add sidewalks and connectivity for safety is something that we're looking at. Two other things real quickly, Kids Kingdom is ready to open next Monday. We will have the ribbon cutting at 10 o'clock at Dublin for the Kids Kingdom opening. And then, secondly, we've had a couple people talk about having some sort of civil engagement, civic engagement academy. I know they have one in Huntsville, Birmingham. Tracy Gillespie, who is working with us out of my office and Mary Beth's office, is going to lead that. We strongly believe that that's a great project and program to have in the city of Madison. We're going to work on the curriculum now through the end of the year, look to probably open that up sometime in the February timeframe for applicants, and start it sometime in the fall, I mean, excuse me, in the spring. And so we see that as a benefit to try to get as many people as we can into that, to learn as much as they can about our city, and we do thank some of the folks who have asked for that, and we're going to help make that happen. And with that said, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. You've been a little busy, District One.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor, that's exciting, lots going on. I just have one event to report on, and that is that, just to thank the Chamber of Commerce for inviting me to their fourth quarter lunch and learn. It was presented by Meta, and was interesting to learn about the diagnostics that go behind social media, very informative and a smidgen scary. And like the mayor said, several of us went to BJ's, and just want to again say, you know, please consider going and getting your membership. Personally, we're going to drop Costco and Sam's, just so thrilled to have them in our community, just going to be such a great economic development, and hats off to Mary Beth and her team for bringing BJ's, the first BJ's, to Alabama. So very excited about that, and that's really all I have. District Two?
Okay, the mayor and I attended the elected officials' breakfast with Huntsville Area Association of Realtors, and we had some really good discussions with them about the importance of finding out exactly where a house is located, as far as is it in a specific city limits or in a county, an incorporated portion of the county, before you start advertising that house. And so we've talked about that here a few times, and they were very interested in it, and in fact, have asked for us to come back and help them learn more about that. And I thought that was very, it was some really good conversations there. I had a TACOG board meeting, where it was the first board meeting where I presided as president, and so that was exciting. We went to the state of the county, and you know, the future is bright, this is Madison County, future is bright in both Madison and Limestone Counties, but it was really great to see Chairman McCutcheon and listen to him speak about some of the exciting projects that are going on in our county. Then Madison Utilities Meeting, and Madison Utilities is, obviously not in charge of the microphones, or maybe they are. They're growing even faster than our city because they can provide services outside of our city limits, and so there are exciting things happening there. The BJ's, we got to walk through after the ribbon cutting the other day, and if y'all have not had a chance to go, it is fabulous. They have everything. I mean, I was like, oh! Well, anybody who's been shopping with me understands that I have an issue trying to stay focused while we're shopping, and it was very distracting if we were walking down the aisles. We would be talking about something, and then we would be looking at something else. But it's a great store, it's well laid out, everybody, all the employees were so very friendly, and I'm just thrilled to have them here. The Veterans Day Parade, that was one of the coolest Veterans Day Parade I've been in. It was a different route this time, and it was really nice, I mean, there were people everywhere, and waving flags, and so excited to be celebrating our veterans, and I just, our community does it like no other community, and I'm so proud of our whole community for the way that we show out for our veterans. And that is all that.
District Two?
So I'm going to talk about events and things like that. I am grateful that the Veterans Day Parade I did not attend it, but I am grateful for the veterans we have, and I just want to take a minute to let's be thankful. You know, we don't, we don't get to do that a lot. Thanksgiving's coming up, and I am thankful that we live in a great community. You know, I don't know how much people travel or what have you, but I promise you, when you travel outside of this community and you come back, you come back home. And I'm grateful for that, and I just, you know, I'm grateful for our police officers that they keep order in our city. They allow us to have freedom of speech. We don't have to agree, but we can always talk about things, and I'm grateful that we, you know, we have this interfaith group that we can, we can all worship differently and still come together. And, sorry, I'm just, I'm just grateful to live here, and I hope you guys are. I know that our lights are sometimes not right, and I know that we don't have the right sidewalks or whatever, but it's still home, and it's home to me.
Thank you, Teddy. District Four?
No new business.
District Six?
I'd also like to thank our veterans. It was a wonderful parade, we had a lot of fun just waving, we didn't get to throw candy this time, but it was so good to see so many people along that, along the parade route who had served, and we're able to thank them for their service and the people they're supporting. It was a wonderful event, I'll just add to that. Also, this month, I did meet with the Madison Visionary Partners, I am now the liaison with them. I will be attending their meetings, I have a greater understanding exactly what their role is and how they do bring in money, and what expectations are, and I plan on finding out more and bringing a greater understanding so all of us can understand what it is they do for the city itself. So I'm grateful to be on that board now, be a liaison. Also, McDavies having their meetings tomorrow, really, they need more volunteers. If anybody has time to work with the special needs children and be part of that, please, put your name forward. They really are looking for good people that can be there and help for our children. And then we have Christmas coming up, there's so many wonderful events happening in this city during Christmas. If you've never been here, it's a wonderful time. Unfortunately, I don't have them all listed here, usually I have the stuff, but it starts right away in December 2nd, isn't that when we all have the tree lighting, isn't that December 2nd? And that stuff, and we have new ornaments this year, and just so much excitement around that. So look at the calendar, plan to be there, we're having the parade, it is a wonderful time to come together as family in this city. And that's all I have, thank you.
District Seven?
No new business.
And I do not have any new business, so we will move forward with board committee appointments. Mayor, I think you've got?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and lead this one, so ask for council support in the appointment of Brendan Matthews to place three of the Madison Station Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Okay, are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we will appoint Brenda Matthews by acclamation.
All right, and then we'll move to requests for appointing Cindy Sensenberger in place six for the Madison Station Historic Preservation Commission.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we will appoint Cindy Sensenberger by acclamation.
All right.
Okay, next, public hearings. We have four public hearings. Um, when we open public hearings, each, uh, citizen gets to speak for five minutes. We'll want you to state your name, uh, and your district when you come up to speak, uh, and keep your comments pertinent to the specific hearing that we're having. And let's go ahead and get started.
Good evening. The first item is Proposed Ordinance Number 2023 dash 319. And this is to rezone approximately one acre of property at 3112 Palmer Road. It's located at the southwest corner of Palmer and Tribble. Uh, you can see the, uh, property called out, um, on the exhibit. This property is currently zoned M2 and the request is to rezone it or downzone it down to M1, which is a restricted industrial zoning. And the, uh, reason that the applicant is requesting this is they have a karate studio that they want to locate in this, um, building. And, uh, karate studios are not permitted. That kind of use is not allowed in the M2 zone, um, but it is allowed in the M1 zone. It's approved by the Zoning Board of Adjustments and Appeals as a special exception. This item did go to the Planning Commission. Um, they are recommending support as a staff. We didn't have any, uh, comments from the public at the Planning Commission meeting, um, regarding this request. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, and is the property owner here?
I do not believe that he's here.
Okay, all right, we're going to open public, the public hearing. And if there's anybody from the public who wants to comment on this specific hearing, please come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any questions from council regarding this?
Is this similar to what we did when we, the soccer academy went into it? So similar?
Yes, that, that property on West Chester is zoned M1 already. Um, so that's what this property would be doing.
Great, thanks.
Okay, do we have a motion in a second?
Move to approve.
Motion in a second? Ready for vote? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is Proposed Ordinance Number 2023 dash 321. This is also a rezoning request. Um, this is to rezone approximately five and a half acres on Pension Row. You can see the area, um, marked on your exhibit there. Um, this property is currently zoned Ag and they're asking to rezone it to R1B. R1B allows for detached single family is the predominant use. That's what the applicant is intending to do. Uh, given the overall property side, size, technically they could get 15 units on the property. However, given the dimensional requirements of R1B, which requires 100 foot lot frontage, if they were to do lots, uh, running, um, along Pension Row, running along Pension Row, they'd only be able to fit five lots on the property. Um, the applicant has indicated that they might do anywhere from five to 10. If they were to go above five, they'd have to install a cul-de-sac off of Pension Row and have the lots come off of that. Uh, so we had indicated in the Planning Commission's staff report and in our discussion with the commission that we would expect anywhere from five to 10 houses, uh, on the property if the property were rezoned. Uh, the Planning Commission did support this request as a staff. At the Planning Commission meeting, we did have an inquiry from the public as to, um, what the, um, houses might cost at this time. We did not have that information, uh, but they were just interested to know, um, you know, the nature of the project there. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Is there anyone who's interested in this particular issue?
Yes, the applicant is present here. I don't know if they wish to make any remarks.
Okay. Do we have any questions for them that are here though? We're going to go and open up the public hearing on this item.
Margie Daly, Karen's District?
I'm sorry. There's a giant bug behind your phone. Sorry.
Your state.
Oh. Oh, oh.
There you go.
I got a girl.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Meredith.
Okay, I only have one question. This is a real estate company coming in to rezone and then what do they do? Flip the property?
That, that's your question? Okay.
One of them.
Well, what's the other one? We'll write them down and then we'll get them when we close the public hearing.
So, I mean, if it's, if we're rezoning it to be 100 foot frontage lots and then they're going to come back and ask for an exemption to do up to 10 lots so that it won't be 100 footage? So why are we going to zone it for 100 foot lots? We're going to chain, rezone and then they're going to come back and want to build more houses? Because they've already told Mary Beth that, she just told us that. So why would we rezone this now? Why don't we just wait and, and get the plan and actually do things the right way? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter?
Okay, Bernadette Mayer, District Five. I'm a little bit concerned about this, um, development as far as the amount of green space and good drainage and, um, if the areas, I think that area is kind of prone to flooding or whatever already. And also, um, the attractiveness of the development. I guess I'm just kind of concerned with the way the Everstead, you know, has kind of developed where they don't hardly have any trees, no, you know, grassy areas. It's, you know, a lot, so a lot of, everything's going to run off on concrete and whatever and it's just going to be a drainage issue nightmare. Um, how it's going to look like, if it's going to be attractive or if it's going to be dysfunctional or, uh, you know, looking, uh, you know, as was commented, um, it'd be nice to kind of really see what the plan is before we just approve, um, something that has loopholes to be able to change whatever is done. Like you say, exemptions after and whatever. And, um, I mean, it certainly be nice to see what they actually want to do before you rezone it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Anyone else like to address this topic on the hearing? Seeing none, we will close public hearings and ask Mary Beth to come back. Oh, sorry, did you have something? I, I didn't see.
I'll, I'll answer him, Gerald.
She's about to.
Yeah. But, I mean, you can if you want to, but I will.
Okay.
And he can chime in. Pardon?
The answer to the math problem.
Yeah, so, uh, there's no exception that would be asked for that, um, so the, the zoning ordinance requires a 100 foot lot frontage. Um, so even if they were to add a cul-de-sac, those lots would have to meet the, it's actually 100 feet at the building line. So it's, it's conceivable in a cul-de-sac, you might have 75 feet, um, but that, at the building line, it's 100 feet, what, 100 feet wide. So the property, if you were to measure the frontage along Pension Row, um, it's a little over 500 feet. So you divide that by 100, you're going to get five lots. It's not 600 feet long, so you can't get six feet or six lots running along Pension Row. The only way you could add more than five lots is if you did a cul-de-sac off of Pension Row and then each of those lots off the cul-de-sac would have to meet the 100 foot minimum building lot line and they would have to meet the minimum lot size for the zoning. So mathematically, you can get anywhere from five to about 10 and that's what the, um, applicant has indicated and indicated that at the Planning Commission meeting. Um, with respect to, uh, drainage, um, we're not aware that this property is subject to flooding. Um, there is an existing house that's on the property and there used to be a flower shop on the property. Uh, there are three homes that are not on the property that front onto Palmer. I'm not aware that they have any kind of flooding or drainage issues. The city's ordinance doesn't allow for a property to increase drainage off site and these homes would have to be able to meet our drainage requirements on site. The subdivision that would go forward would have to be able to show that. Oftentimes the solution would be to do with some type of common detention area. It just depends upon, um, how they want to configure the lots. Uh, if they were to configure the lots so that there were five along Pension Row, those lots are going to be pretty deep. They'd be able to, assuming the land falls this way due to detention, let's say, in the back of the home. With respect to landscaping, um, as people who live in a single family home, uh, know, um, there's a lot of leeway in terms of landscaping that you can put on your property. The city doesn't dictate that for single family homes. Um, and so we would expect, because there is industrial zoning to the back, that they would have some landscaping along the back. Um, and to that point, the property to the west that is zoned industrial, um, they did have to install landscaping along that property when it developed, not because we thought there were going to be homes here, but because the property is already zoned Ag and already allows for homes. Um, that landscaping is fairly new. It's still not in maturity, but it will also provide some screening. I think those were the three points that were raised. Happy to answer any questions.
Mary Beth, could you give us the definition of frontage?
Uh, so, uh, the city's code actually requires, I refer to it as frontage because most lots, if they're rectangular, the, um, building lot line is what the, the code is. So if this piece of paper were a lot and let's say this is the street, this is the frontage from this point to this point. It's easier to, I guess, show you as an exhibit. So on the city's code, the lot, building lot line, you have a front setback, right? Which varies depending upon the zoning district. So if your front setback was, say, 30 feet, when you measure 30 feet from the property, front property line, this dimension for R1B has to be 100 feet wide. In a cul-de-sac, you know, you may have actually 75 feet at the curb line, but where the home is built, it has to be 100 feet. And again, it varies depending upon the zoning. R1B is one of the larger, um, zoning districts in the city. Um, it's a low density district.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mary Beth, I have a concern. Um, I think as all of council knows, and Greg, this is your district, Pension Row is historically an older African American. The homes, uh, along that street are anywhere from 40 to probably 80 years old. My concern is for the residents that live along there, their property values. Um, building this, it's, it's a kind of a good, bad situation. Your property value is going up, but at the same time, a lot of these folks are on limited income, uh, you know, maybe a pension or retirement. How is this going to affect their property value as far as the taxes that they may have to pay? And is there a possibility that an adjustment could be made, um, where they could, and I don't know anything about taxes, but, but they could be held at a certain rate so that it doesn't severely impact their property tax?
Uh, we're not aware in our, we, we're not aware in our department that the tax assessor is going to go to an adjacent property and reassess that property. Uh, most, just because there's a development across the street. Most tax, um, assessors offices, you know, annually go through and assess property based upon overall market, not because of what's directly adjacent. And I've had conversations with the tax assessor specifically about, not about this particular situation, but just about rezoning. So if a property is rezoned, the tax assessor doesn't automatically go in and reassess that property. They're going to go in and assess the property once development occurs. But likewise, they're not going to the adjacent properties and automatically adjusting. So I would expect, um, those properties, their assessment may change as the market goes up. Likewise, when the market goes down, people can ask, ask the tax, tax assessor's office to reassess their property downward. I don't think development of this property is going to have an, a, an immediate, direct negative impact from those existing homes perspective and from an assessment. Will it improve the value of the, the area or, and the aesthetics of that location? I would say yes.
They're building other new homes on the north side of Pension Row also that aren't even related to this, or other single family homes that are...
Right. And it, and it, it just, that's not the way the tax assessor works.
Okay, all right. That's good to know. I didn't know that.
Mm-hmm.
So that, so in a way they could be protected.
I wouldn't use that word.
Okay. Let me rephrase it.
Yeah, you can't manage the, the value up from this bias.
Right.
Correct.
There's nothing we can do to help protect and protect, not the right word. Okay.
Can you give me some examples of things that can go on agricultural?
Um, plant nurseries can go on, um, there. Um, schools, uh, can go on there. There's a variety of uses with special exceptions. I didn't bring the zoning ordinance, um, for me, uh, with, with me this evening. Um, you can put homes. Um, the homes require a minimum of three acres. So given the size of this property right now, it's just under, oh, it's five and a half acres. So you could only put one single family house on the property currently. Um, but it does allow for residential, which is there now. Um...
Can you put livestock on it? Can you?
You could, um, you could do, uh, any type of agriculture, you know, raise crops, that type of thing, yes. Mm-hmm.
Are there any other questions for Mary Beth? I believe we're, have we gotten a motion in a second? On this one?
I don't think we're there yet.
Move to approve.
Okay, motion in a second. I think we're ready for votes. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And the motion passes.
All right.
Next.
And the, uh, next planning item is Proposed Ordinance Number 2023 dash 323. And this is to amend two sections of the zoning ordinance, um, as it pertains to the allowance of uses in the urban center district. We don't have an exhibit for you for this evening. Um, currently the urban center district is, um, where, what, most of Town Madison is zoned. And we list a number of uses that are allowed. Um, sometimes they have conditions. Uh, one of the uses that's currently allowed is medical office. Um, if medical office is located on the ground floor, it's currently required to have a 50% retail component. So you can envision like an eye doctor where they sometimes will have that optical sales component. So we put that into the ordinance. The council adopted that, um, because we were trying to maximize retail sales. And also, um, there can be lots of small little doctors' offices that like to pop up and we were trying to preserve the land for retail uses. Uh, the ordinance does allow medical office without any restriction above the ground floor. The applicant is requesting to allow medical use without that retail component and staff is supporting that. Uh, one of the reasons that we, again, we're, another reason we were limiting medical offices, we were trying to, um, get some larger scale office. You can envision like Hexagon, for example. Well, COVID has really kind of put a kibosh on that kind of, um, development occurring. So, and we think that there's been enough development in Town Madison, restaurants and things, hotels of that nature, um, that we're ready to support allowing medical use without, um, a restriction or a requirement for the retail component on the ground floor. We're not supporting, uh, the location of urgent care or surgery centers or, um, hospitals or that type of, um, use, uh, just because we think that'd be a little bit more intensive and given all of the residential that's around, we're, we're not really comfortable with that. Uh, the other component of this change, or this zoning change is to allow for daycare uses. Um, currently the ordinance isn't written to allow for them. Uh, the applicant is requesting that we consider that. Um, and so staff, um, is aware that there's, um, generally a shortage of childcare in the metro area. We've got a number of projects under construction in Madison, but there is a shortage. Um, we can see where this would be a complimentary use to, um, Hexagon to some of the businesses around us, well as the residential in and around Town Madison. Um, there's also a spinoff benefit, um, to having somebody drop off their child, pick up their child and stop and pick up food. Uh, Planning Commission is also supportive of these two, um, changes. We didn't have anybody speak at the commission, um, against them. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we're going to open public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this issue during public hearing? We have five minutes.
I have a couple of questions on this. So this is called urban center. And we're talking, uh, Town Madison, is that the only urban center that we have zoned so far? Or, because I know we spoke about doing it on all four sides, east, west, north and south, to make these little cities and cities. And my concern is two things. You're talking daycare center and that's that green cup area where you can bring your alcohol from place to place in Town Madison. where you can bring your alcohol from place to place in Town Madison. So now we're gonna mix daycares with alcohol and possibly cannabis, because cannabis has been approved, and we're talking medical. So are we gonna exempt cannabis, or we're gonna allow it in this, in this UC zone? That's all I have to say, yeah.
Okay, is there anyone else who has a question or comment? We're gonna close public hearing, um, let Mary Beth come back up.
So with respect to urban center, uh, there are location criteria to meet if you want your property to be zoned urban center. And when this zoning district was established, uh, we identified the fact that there are two areas that could be urban center. One is Town Madison, and the other is the northeast corner of County Line and Madison Boulevard. Um, there's a large sixty-acre property there that meets the locational criteria. Currently, this property has got, um, both commercial and industrial zoning. But if they wanted to come in and request urban center, then they would meet the location criteria. Uh, with respect to, uh, the comment about cannabis, uh, the city's ordinance does not allow cannabis. I think council's been very clear on the record, it, it wasn't going to support that. Um, medical office is a very different use from cannabis.
And to clarify, the urban center is different than the entertainment district? I think.
So.
They're staying up the entertainment district with the.
Mm-hmm. So the entertainment district that's located in, uh, Town Madison, uh, does not go over the hill. It, um, basically is the stadium property west of Zirat Road. Um, the daycare, um, use that we're aware of, if it's looking, would be located on the other side of the hill.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mary Beth? Do you have a motion in a second?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, let's give Spears the motion and Powell the second.
We'll try and do some works, let her have it.
Let her have it, alright. I think we're ready for a vote. You're gonna give it tomorrow to Spears. I got yours as a motion.
Tony and then Teddy.
And then Teddy has a second.
Coin flip.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Obleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you, Mary Beth. One more public hearing. I'm on your end.
Good evening. The Revenue Department has one item, uh, for a public hearing this evening. And we have resolution number twenty-two-three dash three-seven-three dash R. This is a request from BBB Smokies LLC, doing business as a big pack breakfast. The business has requested a restaurant retail liquor license for their location at, uh, KD seventy-one Highway seventy-two West. The reason that this business is applying for, uh, retail liquor license at this time is because, uh, this is a new business opening in the city of Madison. Everything is in order for this to be considered.
Okay, let's open the public hearings. Anybody who wants to address this particular item?
Margie Daley, Tarrant District. Anyway, you know, I've been requesting this liquor map, to know where we have liquor, uh, available. I was also shocked, 'cause, you know, I don't drink, but I had to buy a bottle for a gift, and I went out to buy a bottle, and the city charges thirteen percent sales tax on liquor, just city tax? Oh, yes. Oh, yes, I had to pay it. Yes. Thirteen percent city taxes. We are being nickel and dime to death in Madison. But when are we gonna put a map out so we can keep them?
It was up there.
A map of all the liquor licenses that I've been requesting for a year now?
And that with all of the different.
All of the liquor licenses, so we know, because we're supposed to be keeping them away from schools and stuff like that, but, you know, right now, it's just haphazard. Let's just add another one, another one, another one. So I really think we should get a map of them. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who wants to address the liquor license? And big bad breakfast. Seeing none, we will close public hearings. Do you have a motion in a second?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Obleski, second by Seifert this time. Um, are there any questions for Ivan?
Alright, we're ready for a vote. Councilmember Obleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you, Ivan.
Thank you.
Our report's beginning with engineering.
Okay, I have, uh, three items this evening. Um, the first one is resolution number twenty-two-three-three-fifty-one R. This is the acceptance of the Everstead at one eighty Hughes Road into the City of Madison maintenance program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Shaw, second by Powell. Any questions?
Everything in order to take it in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ready for a vote.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Obleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks.
Okay, next is resolution number twenty-two-three-three-seventy-R. This is authorizing a professional services agreement with T and B Construction and Concrete for the construction of ADA-compliant sidewalk ramps in Home Place subdivision in the amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to be paid from the Engineering Department budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Obleski, second by Powell. Any questions? Ready for a vote.
Councilmember Obleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next.
Alright, and then finally, I have resolution number twenty-two-three-three-eight-one-R. This is authorizing an agreement with Shoals Electric in the amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars for replacement of an upright traffic signal pole for Hardeman Road at County Line Road intersection to be paid from the Engineering Department budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Spears, second by Shaw. Any questions?
I, I just wanna make sure, on that intersection, um, we're also, we made some improvements to it. You're continuing to analyze that as far as traffic flow, um, to make sure that we're continuing to get optimal results to that.
Uh, yes, sir, they, improvements that they made were to, were for detection purposes. They're trying to, trying to keep traffic moving better. Uh, I, I think that the DOT guys over in Public Works have switched that back to the recall system, while they continue to analyze, uh, what to do going forward. But it should be, hopefully, it should be back to the way it was before detection's beginning today. I think.
Okay, ready for a vote? Alright.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Obleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I have two items this, uh, this evening. Resolution two-zero-two-three-dash-three-seven-four-R is authorization a professional service agreement with Nolan Van Pearson Architects for the Public Safety Annex, estimated four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars to be paid out of the General Capital Improvement Fund thirty-eight.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Powell, second by Shaw. Any questions? Where exactly is this gonna be located?
That's the Hexagon twenty-three-eight building that we purchased.
Okay, the one we toured.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Alright, ready for a vote.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Obleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes. And for clarity, Karen, I did ask, when did we call it? The Public Safety Annex, and apparently, it just happened in this agenda.
Okay, yeah.
It used to be, so that we weren't calling it twenty-three-eight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, uh, next is resolution two-zero-two-three-dash-three-eight-five-R, authorizing an amendment to our contract with Lead Company for HVAC maintenance to include Sunshine Oaks and Palmer Park. This would be an additional four thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars to be paid out of Facilities and Ground budget.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, motion by Powell, second by Seifert. Any questions?
This is just a normal maintenance kind of contract.
HVAC, yeah, quarterly maintenance, change the filters, check the belts. And also, it covers the equipment also. So in, in our contract with them, if the equipment fails, it's in their contract to replace it or repair it in, in with this.
So we're doing pre-maintenance, though?
Yes.
Instead of reactive maintenance?
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, ready for a vote.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Obleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Good evening, I have one item for your consideration this evening. It is ordinance number twenty-two-three-three-seventy-seven. This is an ordinance to amend chapter eleven of the city's personnel policies, which pertains to attendance and leave. We are requesting suspension of the rules this evening so that the finance and HR staff can collaborate on the backend processing that will need to be done to implement this ordinance. Um, as we've discussed in prior meetings and memos, the intent of this ordinance is to introduce a little bit more flexibility into the city's leave policy, so that employees can use the leave that they've accumulated in ways that work well for themselves and for their families. I'll be happy to hit the highlights and recap any of, um, the material and the policies, if you'd like me to at this time, and I'll be glad to take any questions that you have.
Make a motion to suspend the rules so that we can address this this evening?
Second.
Okay, motion by Obleski, second by Shaw, to suspend the rules. I need unanimous consent. Ready for a vote.
Councilmember Obleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the rules are suspended. Let's go. Thank you.
Now, make a motion to, um, approve the ordinance. And, uh, we can just discuss it. And the reason that we've asked to suspend the rules is so that this can take place and begin in the December pay period for our employees.
Okay. Okay, motion by Obleski, second by Powell. Now, let's go with the summary. Sure thing.
So the key proposals are as follows. Allow accumulated leave exceeding two hundred hours to convert to sick leave, which in turn converts to retirement time instead of being lost. Allow up to forty hours of annual leave to be cashed out once per year. That's fifty-six hours per year for the fire department, who have twenty-four-hour shifts. Allow up to forty hours of sick leave to be converted to annual leave or cash once per year if employees maintain a minimum balance of eighty hours of sick leave. Strike waiting periods for being able to use leave for new employees. Allow employees to use sick leave to care for immediate family members instead of having to tap into their vacation balances, and add Juneteenth to the city's official list of holidays.
Okay, any questions?
No, thank you very much for putting this together. I think it's excellent for employees.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, I think it's cool, I mean, it's part of, uh, you know, uh, as people leave and, you know, we're trying to retain employees, and I think this would be very helpful. So thank you for it.
Well, it's retention, and the other part of this is, previously, you know, they were gonna use it or lose it. I think in this case, they have the ability to utilize it in a different way, which again, means we have them in the office or in the field longer. So it's a win-win-win, and kudos to Megan for meetings she met with all the department heads, took their list, narrowed it down to these things, and has continued to move it forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. And made adjustments after hearing feedbacks. Mm-hmm. In terms of what we're voting on tonight. Everybody ready? Okay.
Councilmember Obleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you, Megan.
I have two matters for your consideration tonight. First is proposed ordinance number twenty-two-three-dash-three-seventy-five. This would amend the period of time to noise permit, maybe filed from fifteen days to seventy-two hours prior to the event that's being permitted. This is a first reading.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next, we have proposed ordinance number twenty-two-three-dash-three-eight-four. This is authorizing the conveyance of certain property owned by the water and wastewater board of the city of Madison. This is also a first reading, but MU has requested a suspension of the rules for a vote on this tonight.
Move to suspend the rule.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Ready for a vote. Spears had the motion, Shaw had the second.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Obleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Unanimous approval. Now, we're ready for the motion? And then we'll ask questions.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, motion by Shaw, second by Powell. Okay, motion by Shaw, second by Powell. Tell us what's going on.
Alright, uh, it's a little convoluted, but I'll, I'll say this. There's a water source north of seventy-two that MU wants, and uh, there's a property there that they thought that they had the first right of refusal to, but when they looked at the legal descriptions, it wasn't correct. So basically, without getting too wonky about it, uh, what they're trying to do is transfer everything over in one D, then quitclaim it back, minus the easement, and minus the water rights that they want. So, in the end, they're gaining something out of this, but technically, they quitclaim that the statute requires the council to approve, so, that's why they were having to go this route.
Any questions?
Is wonky like a legal term? I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's very descriptive.
It is.
And, and Connie said we needed to do this, so, okay, let's read for vote. Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Brian. Planning.
This is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash three seventy-eight, and this is for vacation of utility and drainage easement at one ten Tom Thrasher Lane, which is located uh, west of um, Walt Triana, just opposite on the cul-de-sac from the Cracker Barrel. And you can see the area of the easement that would be vacated along kind of that north um, property line. It backs to uh, right away, owned by Aldot. We are um, asking that you suspend the rules this evening. We are working with a, a restaurant that we are trying to get located on the property, and looking to remove any impediments from that deal going forward as quickly as possible. So would ask for you to suspend, suspend the rules this evening.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, motion by Roblesky, second by Shaw. Let's vote on that. Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Unanimous approval. Now need a motion on the main.
Move to approve.
Motion. Second. Motion by Shaw, second by Roblesky. Alright, any questions? Ready for vote? Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
And the motion passes.
Thanks very much.
Alright, please.
Tonight, we get to do something a little different. Uh, first resolution is resolution number twenty twenty-three three oh eight R. That's authorizing the retirement of Madison Police K-nine Bruno, and transferring uh, ownership to his handler, officer Adam Lawson. Bruno, for the, yeah, for the last couple of months, uh, we took Bruno off of aggression work and tracking, and we've only been using his nose because of the fact that he's getting older and he has some physical issues and all, but now he can retire and go chase rabbits and do all the other kind of stuff. And uh, anyway, Adam, if you wanna come up?
Can I pose this, so I can get Bruno?
I, I hate losing Bruno. This is, we have some excellent dogs in the Air Force, but they don't get any better than this dog right here. He's, as you can see, he's absolutely beautiful, uh, very well-trained, very well-handled by an outstanding dog handler. And uh, the, the good news is, is that Adam is breaking in a new dog as we speak.
Yeah.
At Bruno's spot. Not that anybody can really do that. So, Adam, you have something you wanted to?
No. No. No.
Guess his nose really works well.
Been like that for seven years. It's been said, that it is not just those with two legs who are born with a soul that has the courage to wear a badge. For the last nearly seven years of my eleven years of service, K-nine Bruno has been my partner, protector, and best friend. When I discovered this past spring, that K-nine Bruno had developed a spinal disease due to the years of intensive training necessary to do our job, it goes without saying that I was devastated. But upon reflection, I believe that he would say it was the keepsake of a life spent defending something. He's been my faithful companion through many long shifts, and for several years, we own the night. With K-nine Bruno's nose ever ready to serve, we have protected the citizenry from the criminal element. We've completed hundreds of narcotic seizures, countless evidence recoveries, and successfully executed twenty-nine criminal apprehensions of dangerous offenders. We've located murder weapons, leading to the successful prosecution of two homicide suspects. We have found lost children and elderly. We've entertained hundreds of children and adults at countless K-nine demonstrations. But as I look back, all I can say is thank you, my dear sweet friend, for bringing me home after every single shift, and for biding my eyes and ears through many dark places, steadfast and unwavering at my side. Of all the souls I've encountered in my years of service, yours is the most human. Thank you.
(applause) We got the, we got Bruno.
(laughing). My Flintstone, uh, eyes.
Bruno, you earned this, buddy. We're gonna miss you.
Yeah.
(laughing).
So heavy.
My gosh.
How good. Holy.
Can I get on carpet?
(laughing). That's awesome.
Alright.
Thank you so much, I think we.
Thank you, Bruno. Thank you, Austin Lawson.
We need a motion in a second.
Uh, I make a motion to approve Bruno's happy retirement and happy trails, buddy.
A second.